Good evening.
Buenas noches.
I'd like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, February 17. Will you please rise with me and say the pledge of allegiance?
I will. Pastor Moody?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Dr. Randles.
Present.
Mr. Ross is not here.
Mr. Slade?
Mr. Slade.
Dr. Baker is here.
Mr. LaGrande.
Mr. Mathias.
Reverend Mathias is not here.
And President Faal.
President.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support? Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. First on our agenda is the celebrations.
Thank you. I would ask President Faal for Irma Lopez to come forward. Thank you.
Superintendent Neal, President Faal.
Superintendent Neal, President Faal.
Mr. Johnson, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Ms. Bertha Alarchi, who is a prior GRPS board member and also on the Michigan Workforce Development Board of Directors. The Workforce Board is the visionary and sponsor of Kent County and Allegan Essential Service Award. Bertha is a registered nurse, faculty of the University of Phoenix, and in clinical practice with Nursing Care Force.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for that nice introduction. So, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to give praise and honor to God Almighty, as he is worthy to be praised to President Wendy Fobbs, board members, Superintendent Theresa Wetherall Neal, staff, faculty, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to participate with you, to acknowledge and honor one of your employees, Ms. Cynthia Johnson, sitting to my left. Also, Ms. Johnson, who is receiving the Essential Service Honor tonight, is a member of First Community AMB Church, where our pastor is Pastor Gary S. Moore. The Essential Service Award is sponsored by the Michigan Works Kent Allegan Workforce Development Board of Directors. The Essential Service Award eligibility requirements to be a nominee are: Number one, you must have worked with the current employer for at least two-plus years, and you must reside in Kent or Allegan County. Ms. Johnson certainly does meet that criteria. As a board member on the Workforce Development Board, I've had the opportunity to nominate deserving candidates for this position, and certainly Ms. Johnson, sitting to my left, has met the criteria and beyond. She has served with distinction, in our opinion, both with the Grand Rapids Public Schools and certainly with the community service that she has provided for First Community AMB Church. Many received many applications. However, Ms. Johnson was selected to receive this great honor. And so we're so pleased that Ms. Johnson was selected to receive this honor. She was also honored at the Economic Club Luncheon at the Emway Grand Plaza on Monday, January 27. And Superintendent Theresa Neal was present, and so was our pastor, Pastor Moore, and many others. I was present, and we were pleased to have that opportunity to applaud Ms. Johnson. And Cynthia's role as custodian, she ensures that the buildings and areas that are entrusted to her are clean and glistening, as she has provided some 23 years of custodial services to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and over 10 years of free custodial services to First Community AMB Church. She has refused to allow the church to pay her a nickel for her consistent custodial services over the years. I personally know Ms. Johnson. I have had the pleasure of knowing her for over 23 years. She is a very pleasant, quiet, spirited young lady, whom I have enjoyed knowing her for the many years that I've stayed. So, I speak from personal experience about the person that Cynthia is. So, on behalf of the Michigan Works Workforce Development Board, the Selecting Committee, and First Community AMB Church, we are pleased to join with Superintendent Theresa Wetherall Neal, the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Directors, and all of those that are assembled this evening, as we acknowledge and honor Ms. Cynthia Johnson for her services, both to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and to First Community for 23 years respectively. It is my pleasure to present Ms. Cynthia Johnson. And Superintendent Neal will proceed from here.
Thank you. Good job.
I do have Irma, if you will come forward, please. This is a gift certificate and a certificate from our Michigan Works program here in the district. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Ms. Johnson would like to have a few remarks. Ms. Johnson?
First of all, I'd like to get God, he's the head of my life. I want to thank everyone here, Ms. O'Neal, board members, all the staff of GRPS. I just don't just do what I do. I do things because of that, just how I am. And I thank God just for being an employee of GRPS. I have had beautiful 23 years of working here. I thank Michigan Works, Kent County, that gave me the award. I thank Bertha for you nominating me. You know, you just have to be yourself. Just, you don't know who's watching you, who was doing what. Just be yourself, be natural, and God would take over and do everything for you. But I'd like to thank Ms. Bertha and the committee and everyone for that. They gave me this certificate. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. Next on our agenda, a report of the student representative. And we... Oh, you're going to have to do the introduction all over just for me, because I wasn't here at the last meeting to meet this gentleman.
This is unhelpful. You have anything to report?
No, just, everything's going to get unioned.
It's all good. It's all good.
She has a program called the Dappa Challenge, and that's going good.
The Dappa Challenge? Yes, I started to start them. At first, they were so happy.
The what challenge?
The Dappa Challenge?
Oh, Dappa.
Where we're going to help African-American males.
The Rito de Abandonados.
Yes, because the...
The Rito de Abandonados.
It is ready of dropping out.
And because of the cifra of the people who abandon the schools.
I'm also going to be mentoring them.
So, we're going to be mentors there.
Well, thank you. I want to get my personal welcome, since I wasn't at the last meeting when you introduced. Welcome. Glad you're here to serve. Public comment on board agenda items. Dr. Baker, do we have?
We have one. Probably a comment for a board agenda item. Albert Prince.
Albert Prince. Ah, Albert. There he is. Ahí está.
Good evening, Mr. Prince. You know the drill.
I guess so. Is that part of the drill? Sorry. Yes, thank you. I'm a teacher here at the school district. My name is Jack Prince. I have a number of fellow teachers, some neighbors, some parents of students within the district that have gotten together in the last few months and talked over things as concerned parents and stakeholders in the district. And it is of that group that I'm here tonight. It is not a group that some of the people felt comfortable coming to this evening's festivities, but in light of the recent listening tour, they felt like they wanted to express a single issue, of which I'm the messenger. I do concur with everything that they have pinned on this letter. So, I'd like to read the letter at this time. Dear Superintendent, members of the board, we come to you as concerned citizens, parents, taxpayers, teachers, all stakeholders with a vested interest in the educational progress of students at GRPS. We present to you with a single question, a question we find to be of high importance and relevance today. Question is, why wasn't the recommendation of the Cambridge Education Report of 2013, which stated that teacher compensation needed to be raised to attract and retain the best talent, followed? This question has been raised at previous board meetings and was never answered. This question is even of even more importance, as we now see quietly a new round of Cambridge Education consultation with its associated price tag in progress, with assumingly another report of recommendations to follow. We have seen documentation of an expenditure in the year of 2013 of over $970,000 of taxpayer money to this consultation, after spending this enormous amount of money for recommendations, which the district to this day has not followed. To what objective or purpose could we contemplate spending yet another equivalent amount of taxpayer money? Cambridge Education was piloted in GRPS in the year 2011 by a prominent opponent of public education in our community and a supporter of the voucher system, who has vowed publicly to dismantle the public school system. If one cares to investigate Cambridge Education, which by the way has nothing to do with Cambridge University, it is owned by a huge and prestigious corporation called Mott McDonald in the United Kingdom, which has leaders who are involved with charter school operations. Could this money not be spent for better purposes, such as hiring more teachers to reduce class size and to increase teacher pay to attract and retain the best teaching talent available, or to keep open beloved school building? At the time of Cambridge Education's recommendation to increase teacher pay, GRPS is found to be the lowest district for teacher pay in the county. According to the Grand Rapids Press article, it's September 2013, entitled "Who Is Teaching the Teachers?" GRPS remains the lowest pay scale for teachers in the county, and is considerably lower than the next lowest paid district. How can Superintendent and board justify spending nearly a million dollars for a consulting firm when our teachers continue to be the lowest paid in the county? We would very much appreciate your answer to this question by the end of the next board meeting at this very forum. Sincerely signed, concerned citizens and teachers of Grand Rapids Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hunter Reports. Secretary's report. Dr. Baker?
Two very important events in the month of March. The first is the State of the Schools address, where Superintendent Neal will provide our annual state of our schools on Saturday, March 15, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Ottawa Hills High School, 2055 Rosewood Avenue Southeast. The doors will open at 8:30 with light refreshments. You can RSVP by calling 819-2193, or email dana bialk@grps.org. The second event, for everyone to know about, is kindergarten here I come. GRPS is holding its annual kindergarten here I come on March 12 from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. in the Grand Rapids Public Museum, located at 272 Pearl Street Northwest. This is a great opportunity to meet with representatives of our elementary school programs. You'll be able to enjoy a night at the Grand Rapids Public Museum free of charge. Children are welcome and encouraged to attend with a parent or guardian. If you have any questions, please contact the Office of Early Childhood Education, 819-2111. Kindergarten, just for your information, kindergarten eligibility for the 2014-2015 school year will be children five years of age by October 1, 2014.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Superintendent's report.
Next, John Hemhold to come forward to introduce our friend from East Hills. Come on down.
Madam Superintendent, President Faal, members of the board, it's an honor to be here to share with you an update really on some of the happenings around Congress Elementary and our partnership with East Hills Council of Neighbors. The East Hills loves Congress, and really the overall neighborhood school reclamation project that has been part of Superintendent Neal's transformation plan. As you know, during that transformation plan, we looked at a couple different projects, two target areas around Congress Elementary and Mullet Park Elementary. These are looking at these neighborhoods that are fast-growing, fast-evolving, and really looking at how do we further strengthen our partnerships and reopen ourselves up to the neighborhood, to the community, to the business districts, to make our schools more welcoming, inviting, and again, allowing it to be one that's further reclaimed by the neighborhood. We have had such remarkable progress and success. Some things, most recently, where of course the community school garden was one of the more visible examples, but we are continuing to do our work on various levels. And so, we wanted to invite some of our friends to join us tonight. Bridget Chaney, of course, is the principal, who has really been out and about, on the ground, in the streets, working with the neighborhoods directly on this project. And so, I would like to first turn it over to her, so she can kind of give you the school perspective. And then Rachel Lee, who is the head executive director over East Hills, will talk a little bit more about the partnerships, particularly with our friends at Brewery-Vivant, some of the things that they've done to support the schools, the program, and this overall neighborhood school effort. So, Bridget?
Yes, thank you for welcoming us today, Madam Superintendent, President Faal, members of the school board. We appreciate your time today, and we're very excited. We're just coming off from a fundraiser at Brewery-Vivant this weekend to help get us off the ground with our brand-new Girls on the Run team this year. So, we're excited to have that at Congress this inaugural year. And Mariah, who's sitting right behind me, is going to be one of the coaches. Feel very strongly about this for our third, fourth, and fifth grade girls. Excited to welcome that. So, that's one of the tangibles that you'll see from our partnership with East Hills Loves Congress and Brewery-Vivant as well. We were selected, I guess I'll say, as a school for state of opportunities. We thought that Justin Dwyer did. And I really feel that part of that is due to the partnership that we've had with the neighborhood associations, because we are trying to get the true perception of Congress out there. And had no idea when we opened our doors to him what would come of that. But very glad for the report that he put out, the documentary that he put out. And just making everybody aware of the neighborhood school and the reciprocal partnership that we share.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. At the East Hills Council of Neighbors, we're very excited to be in this partnership with Grand Rapids Public Schools for the East Hills Loves Congress campaign. Right now, as an organization, we're working on what we call our public space strategy, which includes four components that are very strong in making our neighborhood, the neighborhood that it is, and pushing it forward for the next 20 years. A couple of things of that is looking at our complete streets and how we can put pedestrians and people first. Safe routes to school, safe routes for seniors. The second part of that is our adaptive reuse and new construction. Over the past 10 years, we've seen an extreme amount of interest in private development happening in our neighborhood, increasing foot traffic by 100% every year. A third part of that is our green space and how we are planning and moving forward our vision for our green space and our urban spaces. The fourth part of that is this East Hills Loves Congress campaign. So, it's a guiding document, an intent document, and it's our vision of what we would like to see happen in our neighborhood and happen within our neighborhood school. Because we truly believe great neighborhoods have great schools. And so, from all the hard work that Bridget and everyone, all the teachers and everyone at Congress School has done, we're looking at, we're looking forward to continuing this partnership and pushing it forward. All the changes that have happened in East Hills has definitely been a clear vision that's placed people at the center of our planning decisions. We're looking at having a, you know, continue to have and increase a vibrant, walkable neighborhood for diversity of residents and diversity of uses, and urban space with people at its focus, and to provide a full list of amenities for our residents and visitors, which include affordable and diverse residential options, healthy commerce, varied recreational opportunities, multiple transit options, and a first-rate neighborhood school. Thus far this year, we've done quite a bit on working on this campaign. We do have some long-term goals that we'd like to see, but once again, that's intent. That's what our vision is, a neighborhood that we'd like to see. And we're looking forward to opening up this partnership and working with other neighborhoods and other neighborhood associations within the Congress, Congress School area. But just some things that have happened in the last year. We have done the community garden, which has seen great success, including a component for the school as well as for residents, and getting more residents into the building and seeing it. And it's been my experience that when a resident or visitor comes into East Hills and goes into Congress School and meets Bridget and sees what's happening, they're very surprised. Their perception that they walked in is not the perception and the reality that they walk out with. And it's due to the hard work of so many people. So, some of our other accomplishments so far in this campaign was getting the building, designated a historic building, as well as the whole site for the park. We replaced the, we worked in collaboration to have the soccer nets replaced. We worked in collaboration to have 10 trees planted to add to our urban forestry. We're working on continuing a community survey. We're working on getting a sign, the sign that you see right now on the Lake Drive fence, as well as we're working towards a Baldwin. Getting the south doors painted blue, having benches and picnic tables on the playground painted. Once again, the community garden, the community zumba classes in the gym, the Creative Youth Center partnering for after-school creative writing classes, and creating strong community and business partnerships, such as the one with Brewery-Vivant. We're very excited to see the participation active, not only financially, but physically, that Brewery-Vivant has done with Congress School and taking it on. It is these types of partnerships that we hope to continue, serve as a model and grow, so that our neighborhood school can continue to have strong partnerships with this group, with this businesses. It takes residents, businesses, neighborhoods, people, children, all to be part of this model to make Congress School the great school, to continue to have it be the great school that it is and to push it forward to the future. Brewery-Vivant, over the last year, has donated over $5,000 to different initiatives that I've mentioned here before, for the benefit of Congress School. And they've also provided numerous volunteer hours to dedicate to the buildings, of the gardens and the trees. They did a rake-and-run, where they raked all the leaves off. And so, it's this type of partnership that we look forward to having with other businesses, and we really applaud the efforts of Brewery-Vivant. That's very kind. I'm Chris Spalding. My husband Jason and I are the owners of the brewery. And when we set out to open the brewery, which has been open for three years now, it was really important to us to be part of a neighborhood and to kind of become part of the fabric of it and, you know, do things that... Take advantage of opportunities to help the neighborhood improve and move forward and all of that. So, it's exciting to have such a great partnership with the neighborhood school and the neighborhood council to be able to do the things that we're passionate about, and those are strengthening community, which a brewery is a pub, a public place. It's somewhere that totally relies on community. So, a lot of why we do things is because if it weren't for the people supporting us and coming into our doors, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we're doing. So, anyway, we have, we have goals around these things. I'm a very goal-oriented person. I came from corporate America, and I think it helps us to, our vision in front of us. And then even more than that, we have this amazing staff. There's three wonderful staff members in front of you, and they're really the ones that are doing a lot of the volunteering work and meeting with Bridget and Rachel and making sure that, you know, we're accomplishing the things that we're able to. So, we're just excited to be part of the neighborhood and to see what the future holds for us, because this is where we're going to be. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Next on our reports is the NSBA Advocacy Institute. Master Moody and Mr. O'Connor and myself and Mr. Hemhold were able to attend this fantastic conference in Washington, DC. And I've asked, if you would report to the rest of the board regarding it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I took the liberty to jot down a few notes that I thought would be important for us all to hear. First of all, it was a wonderful opportunity for me to attend the National School Board Association Conference to advocate for the Grand Rapids Public Schools and to see other individuals from across the country advocate for their schools as well. I met individuals from California, Texas, as far as Oregon. And all are interested in how public school systems are in such disarray. I enjoyed the company of two of my fellow board members, which was Dr. Wendy Fob and John O'Connor. And extremely enjoyed having a conversation with one of our own administrators, Mr. John Hemhold, who I found very interesting, has a wonderful knowledge about education and has a wonderful knowledge about politics from a local, state, and national level. There were such topics at the conference that I thought was interesting. There were hot topics dealing with federal communication between states and schools. And there was one topic that I thought was very interesting, and that was division of public schools from across the spectrum, which indicated that, to some degree, money is a very strong issue with education. And advocacy for teachers as well. We had the opportunity to meet Congressman Bill Heisinger, whom we had dinner with, which was a very wonderful dinner. The next following day, we had a breakfast with Senator Carl Levin and Senator Debbie Stavon, which was very interesting, as Debbie Stavon was really pushing her farm bill. Later on that day, it was passed. The conference gave such highlight with so much information about what needs to be done across the country when it comes to education. There's a lot of work that we all have to do. Also, what I found interesting was that on one of the sessions, I had the opportunity to hear Mr. Bob Woodward, who is one of the legendary Pulitzer Prize-winning journalists, who also had a hand in the writings of the Watergate scandal when it came through President Nixon. He gave a wonderful kudos out to the Grand Rapids, Michigan, and referenced Gerald Ford and what he had to do in reference to that situation with the impeachment or the pardon of our former president, Richard Nixon. So, along with my colleagues, John O'Connor, Wendy Fob, and Mr. Hemhold, we thought it was great to hear a Pulitzer Prize winner talk about Grand Rapids, Michigan, and our former president Gerald Ford.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Moody or the rest of us conferencegoers? Next on our agenda are action items. First, we have a second reading for policy number 8482. Do I have a motion to support a second, the adoption of policy 8482?
Second.
Any discussion regarding this?
No discussion.
Dr. Baker, can you please call the vote?
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Pastor Moody? Mr. O'Connor? Yes. Dr. Randles? And Dr. Baker, yes. Mr. LaGrande?
Reverend Mathias? Yes.
And President Faal?
Yes. Pass this seven. You know what? I'm not writing down the motion. Who made the motion? I made the motion.
That is our green space and how we are planning and moving forward, our vision for our green space and our urban spaces. Um, the fourth part of that is this East Hills Council Congress campaign. So it's a guiding document, an intent document, and it's our vision of what we would like to see happen in our neighborhood and happen within our neighborhood school. Because we truly believe great neighborhoods have great schools. And so, from all the hard work that Bridgette and everyone, all the teachers and everyone at Congress School has done, we're looking at, we're looking forward to continuing this partnership and pushing it forward. All the changes that um have happened in East Hills has definitely been a clear vision that's placed people at the center of our planning decisions. Um, we're looking at having a, you know, continue to have and increase a vibrant walkable neighborhood for diversity of residents and diversity of uses. An urban, urban space with people at its focus and to provide a full list of amenities for our residents and visitors, which include affordable and diverse residential options, healthy commerce, varied recreational opportunities, multiple transit options, and a first-rate neighborhood school. Thus far this year, we've done quite a bit on working on this campaign. Um, we do have some long-term goals that we'd like to see, but once again, that's intent, that's what our vision is, a neighborhood that we'd like to see. And we're, we're looking forward to opening up this partnership and working with other neighborhoods and other neighborhood associations within the Congress, um, Congress School area. But just some things that have happened in the last year, we have done the community garden, which has seen great success, including a component for the school as well as for residents, and getting more residents into the building, um, and seeing it. And it's been my, um, my experience that when a resident or visitor comes into East Hills and goes into Congress School and meets Bridgette and sees what's happening, they're told, they're very surprised. Their perception that they walked in is not the perception and the reality that they walk out with. And it's due to the hard work of so many people. So some of our other accomplishments so far in this campaign was getting the building designated a historic building as well as the whole site for the park. We replaced the, we worked in collaboration to have the soccer nets replaced. We worked in collaboration to have ten trees planted to add to our urban forestry. We did, we're, we're working on continuing a community survey. We're working on getting a sign, the sign that you see right now on the Lake Drive fence as well as we're looking towards the Baldwin. Getting the South Doors painted blue. Having benches and picnic tables on the playground painted. Once again, the community garden, the community zumba classes in the gym, the creative youth center partnering for after-school creative writing classes. And creating strong community and business partnerships such as the one with Brewery Vivant. We're very excited to see the participation active, not only financially, but physical that Brewery Vivant has done with Congress School on taking it on. It is these types of partnerships that we hope to continue serve as a model and grow so that our, our neighborhood school can continue to have strong partnerships with this, with these businesses. It takes residents, businesses, neighborhoods, people, children, all to be part of this model to make Congress School, the great school, to continue to have it be the great school that it is and to push it forward to the future. Brewery Vivant over the last year has donated over five thousand dollars to different initiatives that I've mentioned here before, for the benefit of Congress School. And they also provided numerous volunteer hours to dedicate to the buildings, of the gardens and the trees. They did a rake and run where they raked all the leaves off. And so it's this type of partnership that we look forward to having with other businesses and we really applaud the effort of Brewery Vivant. That's great. That's very kind. Um, I'm Chris Spalding, my husband Jason and I are the owners of the brewery and um, when we set out to open the brewery, which has been open for three years now, it was really important to us to be part of the neighborhood and to kind of become part of the fabric of it and, you know, do things that, um, take advantage of opportunities to help the neighborhood improve and move forward and all of that. So it's exciting to have such a great partnership uh with the neighborhood school and the neighborhood council, uh, to be able to do the things that we're passionate about and those are, um, you know, strengthening community, which Brewery is a pub, a public place, it's somewhere that totally relies on community. So uh, a lot of why we do things is because if it weren't for the people supporting us and coming into our doors, we wouldn't be able to um, do the things that we're doing, so. Anyway, we have, we have goals around these things, I'm a very goal-oriented person, I came from corporate America and I, I think it helps us to, our vision um in front of us. And then even more than that, we have this amazing staff, there's three wonderful staff members um in front of you and they're really the ones that are doing a lot of the volunteering work and, uh, meeting with Bridgette and Rachel and making sure that, you know, we're accomplishing the things that we're able to, so. We're just excited to be part of the neighborhood and to see, you know, what the future holds for us, because this is where we're gonna be. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next on our reports is the NSBA Advocacy Institute. Uh, Pastor Moody and Mr. O'Connor and myself and Mr. Hemholt were able to attend this fantastic conference in Washington DC and I've asked Pastor Moody if he would report to the rest of the board regarding it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I took the liberty to jot down a few notes that I thought would be important for us all to hear. First of all, it was a wonderful opportunity for me to attend the National School Board Association Conference to advocate for Grand Rapids Public Schools and to see other individuals from across the country, advocate for their schools as well. Uh, I met individuals from California, Texas, as far as Oregon. And all are interested in how public school systems are in such disarray. I enjoyed the company of two of my fellow board members, which was Dr. Wendy Fob and John O'Connor. And extremely enjoyed having a conversation with one of our own administrators, Mr. John Hemholt, who I found very interesting, has a wonderful knowledge about education and has a wonderful knowledge about politics from a local state and national level. There were such topics at the conference that I thought was interesting, there were hot topics dealing with federal communication between states and schools. And there was one topic that I thought was very interesting and that was division of public schools from across the spectrum, which indicated that to some degree money is a very strong issue with education. And advocacy for teachers as well. We had the opportunity to uh meet Congressman Bill Heisinger whom we had dinner with, which was a very wonderful dinner. The next following day we had a breakfast with Senators Carl Levin and Senator Debbie Stabenow, which was very interesting as Debbie Stabenow was really pushing her farm bill. Later on that day it was passed. The conference gave such highlight with so much information about what needs to be, what needs to be done across the country when it comes to education. There's a lot of work that we all have to do. Also, what I found interesting was that one of the sessions, I had the opportunity to hear Mr. Bob Woodward, he is one of the legendary Pulitzer Prize winning journalists who also had a hand in the writings of the Watergate scandal when it came through President Nixon being impeached. He gave a wonderful kudos out to Grand Rapids, Michigan in reference to Gerald Ford and what he had to do in reference to that situation with the impeachment or the pardon of our former president, Richard Neilhaus Nixon. So along with my colleagues, John O'Connor, Wendy Fob and Mr. Hemholt, we thought it was great to hear a Pulitzer Prize winner talk about Grand Rapids, Michigan and our former president Gerald Ford. That's Mr. President, that's Murray Ford.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Any questions for Pastor Moody or the rest of us conference goers? Next on our agenda are action items, first we have a second reading for uh Policy Number Eight Four Eight Two. Do I have a motion to support a second, the adoption of Policy Eight Four Eight Two?
Second.
Any discussion regarding this? No discussion? Dr. Baker, can you please call the vote?
Yes, Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
And Dr. Baker, yes. Mr. Legrand. Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
And President Fahl.
Yes.
Passes seven. You know what, I'm not writing down the motion, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
And who supported it?
Mr. O'Connor. Oh, was that, oh, sorry, sorry. Pastor Moody. Got it?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the action item of uh adopting the purchasing agenda, do I have a motion to support that action? Support? Support. Got that, Dr. Baker? Any questions? Discussion?
Uh, just for the record, there is no nine hundred and seventy thousand dollar uh first thing agenda item to someone that was referred to earlier, so. So, very important, we're not voting on that. We're not voting on it. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
And Dr. Baker, yes. And Mr. Legrand. Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
And President Fahl.
Yes.
Passes seven. Zero.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Uh, last one of our action items is approval of a recommendation for administrative appointments. Uh, do I have a motion to support that? I have a motion to support. Support? Support. Moving slowly tonight, boys. Uh, during this discussion, maybe we should have before I had called for the motion. You'd like to give your verbal recommendation, we, we received Mr. Wiz. First of all, I want to say I'm very excited and thrilled to have a new leadership here at the house. And it was wonderful to see gentlemen's resume and I'm excited to hear about it. Would love to get your verbal recommendation.
Thank you very much. Dr. Fahl, I would like to um just share with the public that I have made a recommendation to the board for Chief Financial Officer. And those of you that are aware, um, the person, actually that was Executive Director of our Business Affairs stepped down in September and so, um, thanks to Rhonda Cribs, who um has just done a remarkable job in uh leading us and really steering this district for the past seven months or so in the business office. Um, she's done a great job, but it is really with my pleasure that I would like to ask for approval for the recommendation of Larry and I'm gonna ask Sir John, I don't know where John is, Sharon, oh, John is in back, and Sharon um from HR, come forward and talk about um what Larry brings to the table. You know, part of the role of the Superintendent of this district is to um, put the right people in the scene at the right time. And it takes time to do that, we have to do our due diligence, um, I do as a leader of this district. But more importantly, um, we have to find the right fit, someone who believes, what we believe, which is all children are entitled to the best education that they can get. And um, so I, I do take my time in finding the right people to join this team because just anyone can't join the team. And so we need to be careful. But I've asked Larry to join this team, Larry has accepted, um, and so I'm just pleased for him to be a part of this as we move forward making these changes. So I'm turning it over to Sharon, John, and then Larry, please.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent, as Superintendent Neil said, we're very pleased to recommend and to introduce Mr. Larry Oberst for the position of Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Oberst has over twenty years of accounting and finance experience. He's worked both nationally and internationally as a certified public accountant at the International Accounting Firm of BDO. Uh, most recently, he was the Vice President of Finance for Spectrum Health Continuing Care, where he managed all financial aspects of their eight post-acute service lines. As you can see from his resume, Mr. Oberst comes to GRPS with a wealth of technical, strategic, most important leadership expertise.
As we look at our district as a whole and for our Chief Financial Officer, it's important to remind ourselves of the size and scope of this organization. We are the third largest employer in Grand Rapids, largest in the entire region with a quarter billion dollar budget. We have a highly complex series of funding sources from state, federal, private, and various other means in between. When it comes to transformation plan and look at what those rules were around the transformation, it was looking at we invest in and expand what's working, how we, not just focus on cuts, closures. That's what we did for ten years and it created years of churn and instability and unpredictability. Also exacerbates our academic and our enrollment challenges. And so this plan, as you know, and you've supported unanimously, we asked, we're gonna have to do some more cuts and closures, we did that, but we're also gonna start to invest for growth and future success. Smart and strategic, it is going to require some upfront investments. While certainly, uh, you know, we talk about fund balance, we talk about those resources, um, we are being very calculated in, bringing in an external lens, someone who's, who's had some insight consulting with school districts in life, but also has a pulse for this community and rooted in this community. And can see the momentum energy around GRPS and this transformation. Now more than ever it's time to have this individual carrying on the vision to have this board of education. And uh, if you look at that plan also talked about talent recruitment and retention, I've got, I've got at least two rock stars right next to me here, one of whom is one of the new, but obviously Larry, with your approval and support of course, is hopefully there to be part of this team. Thanks a lot.
I do want the board members to know that we did do a national search. And uh, we were very pleased that we actually found the talent right here at home. Really boost for us.
Well, well, thank you for your kind comments and uh, and I look forward to joining the leadership team here with Superintendent Neil. Ms. Johnson, wonderful job, can't wait to be part of that team too. Everyone out there that has an interest in the success of the, the school district, so uh, the more I talked to the leadership, the more I was impressed and let you know that one of your former board members, Jane Gates, and I worked very closely together at Spectrum for a couple of years and, she's what really got me interested in this particular school district and that in my heart for, for education, public education and the success of um, school districts like the Olympic schools of Grand Rapids, so, look forward to it, thank you.
I, I've had the, you know, privilege of working with Larry, so um, yeah, his knowledge and expertise, it's really gonna be exciting to see what he's gonna bring and just, you know, his, his relationships in Michigan and certainly across the nation, so it's very exciting.
If not, Dr. Baker, can you call the vote?
Uh, yes, Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Pastor Moody. Mr. O'Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Randles.
Yes.
Dr. Baker, yes. Mr. Legrand. Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
And President Fahl.
Yes.
Seven and nothing.
Welcome to the team. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Right, uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda grouping, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some motion.
Support for that?
Support.
Please call the vote.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Randles?
Yes.
Baker, yes. Mr. Legrand. Reverend Matthias.
Yes.
And President Fahl.
Yes.
Seven and nothing.
We have no discussion items, Dr. Baker, do we have uh public comment?
Uh, yes, we do, we have three public comments. Paul Helder. Monica Zavala. And Lamont Cole. So just, we'll, just go ahead and just, this is uh Ms. Cavalla, Monica.
Zavala? So um, you have three minutes and I will, would you like a one-minute morning when, when two minutes are up or? We have a little card, we can give that to you, do you have that out? We'll do that, alright? Thank you.
First, I would like to say thank you to Grand Rapids Public School for this opportunity. I already talked about this issue with the communication, one part, and they um, answered right away my end, my suggestion, but now I, I want um your support to, encourage the city of Grand Rapids to enforce the law that they need to clean their sidewalks. Because our students are walking on the streets and we all know it's pretty dangerous in this climate. I already called to the Grand Rapids City and I don't see much response, so I ask him for your support. If you can help us, the parents, to encourage the city to enforce the law that they need to clean the sidewalks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Madam President, Board Members, President and Friends. Good evening, my name is Lamont Cole. I work for Link Community Valization. There I serve as a community liaison for the Bleed to Become initiative with my school, actually, I'm responsible for its campus right next door. However, this evening I came to introduce and bring some of the parents and community stakeholders to this meeting. Uh, we are now celebrating what is called our LAST, which is the Link Academy for Social Transformation. Many of our parents and community stakeholders have now gone through that academy and now want to become an active part of the community. Coming to not only the Grand Rapids Public School Board meetings, but as well as the um, Grand Rapids Commission meetings as well. So monthly you will get a visit from us. No malice, no malice, just to get parents engaged in this process and to get a better understanding of how this process works. Hands-on experiences is the best. So as you see, Monica and other parents and grandparents are here as well. Because of the weather, we did have a smaller group then initially planned, but this is just the first of what will be many trips here. Thank you very much, good night.
Thank you. Thank you. And uh, Mr. Helder. Been a long time, Mr. Helder. Been a long time, Mr. Helder. Good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I will cut directly to the chase here. I had intended to speak a little bit about the uh policy that you addressed earlier, but I missed that whole portion. But I missed that whole portion because I tarded as fast as one hour and a half to get here. It takes twenty minutes it normally takes to get to twenty. So I'll also keep sure so you can get out of here and we can get home. I just want to make sure on behalf of our nurses and other members that uh, the intent of that policy is merely to clarify the language in the law is not to expand uh any services provided outside of GRA. I just want to make sure we're not moving GRA work to non-GRA personnel. In the simple terms, we're not asking child care workers, secretary, or anything that takes on nursing duties. And I'd be impressed if I didn't bring it now. The other piece I wanted to mention is that it's my understanding at the last meeting that the board took a look at, the bill by the Senate which clarified the language around what constitutes a family. And their idea that a single parent with one child was not a family. Setting aside that personally I believe that interpretation can be reprehensible. The fact of the matter is that we talked about this issue during contract negotiations that we bargained language specifically into the contract in the insurance section of the contract. That states that we have three categories. Single, member and spouse, exactly, member and spouse and nothing else. And family. When I brought this up this afternoon to both Mickey and Sharon, along with the component that, a change in the law may not impair an existing contract, this regular contract law. They both uh, they were happy to hear about this, you know, this possible opportunity to help our people. And they're gonna be contacting some of their colleagues tomorrow. They're gonna be contacting some of their colleagues. So we may not have to do this, in fact, I'm feeling pretty confident. We don't have to do it, but we can. So that's good news all around potentially. But I did want to let you know just how seriously your staff took that and that they're acting immediately. And I really appreciate me reaching out when I find out about something like this. And you know, that's it. Cat in the Hat comes on March fourth. For those who don't know, N E A and Delta Dental extended their loan stop on their national tour, their loan stop in Michigan. They're meeting up with our students and share their love of reading. That's it, thank you.
That's it. Superintendent's comments. I would like to thank the parents that are here tonight. I think it's really important in order to change education, we do need people in this city to get involved. So I appreciate you coming and coming forward. We will do all that we can to work with the city, clearing the streets. But that's, that's really important, that you guys continue to come and you are welcome here at any of our meetings, as well as our committee meetings. You are welcome here. And I also want to thank PAU and GRA, M E A and N E A for the opportunity to take our students to the Cat in the Hat event. Because it could have gone anyplace else. But because of PAU, we are able to offer that to children here in Grand Rapids and looking forward to that in March. To do that at our university, so it should be exciting times. Reverend Matthias?
You know, Link's work is really critical because a lot of the uh, the efforts that they made in the four zones, the home zones, where they worked with various parents. They've gotten really a small army of people trained to be able to engage and they actually now know how to do that. Which is gonna better our schools, it's really, it's really good to see some of our parents I know from home. And so it's really, it's really neat to see them now engaged, they're asking sometimes hard questions, you know, at the local level, but, but good because they want to be part of the solution, which is important. They're not just airing stuff, but they're saying how can we do that? Simply, they're saying, they're saying, they're saying, they're saying.
Sir Legrand? Sir Legrand? Dr. Randles? I just want to confirm that Dr. Baker will discuss the pay increase that he did receive. As for the government. It did happen. Otherwise, I think it's great that we don't have school tomorrow anyway. Because it may be a problem, right? But will the teachers still have their exams for grades? It's about the strategizing tonight. Well, then they have to move that to Wednesday now. Just get your watch back. That's a no. Teachers, you do need to go to professional development tomorrow. Even if you're late. Mr. O'Connor?
I'm just very excited to get to know Mr. Oberst here and uh, see what he has to bring to financing.
Dr. Baker?
Uh, I will disappoint the doctor and I won't debate. I did think that his comments were, you're late, but. Anyway, I think that uh, I think that one thing that appears to be true from the vantage point of, teachers' union presidents, that we're working pretty hard to try to make things as equitable as possible. And I think that this board, especially even the work that we did to help the designation of the health insurance for families, I think, was definitely the work of this administration's board, so. I feel. We, I can hold my head up about the work that we're doing to, you know, bring about equitable pay for the teachers. And it, you know, obviously there's a lot of work that has to be done in lots of places to make that more possible. Uh, but anyway, I wanted to talk about, I wasn't gonna talk about.
But anyway, I wanted to talk about, I was gonna talk about Link also, I think I am really impressed with the work. I think that I actually met you at one of the B to B lunches last, or dinners last spring and so it was nice meeting you, seeing you and Monica. And I remember thinking then about how much work you're doing and persons like you are doing to make education more accessible for families. And it's pretty incredible that Link is assisting in doing that and it seems kinda odd at one level to show up and say we're gonna bring people to tell you our perspective but it's really great, I'm really proud of that. And I think that Superintendent Neil brought up a good point, I think that one place that that even perhaps more input and dialogue can occur is in committee meetings. You're welcome to come back tomorrow at four o'clock right here. We'll have the academic committee meeting and then you can discuss, get more dialogue about what's happening with the curriculum etc. So anyway, I'm really glad that you came tonight, thanks.
Gracias por.
I, I want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to attend the conference. And I welcome the new administrator who's come aboard as well, the administrator nuevo in the schools, I believe. I believe that we're on a very hardworking school board and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more and I do believe that we're on a more, I believe that we're on a more
I guess I just want to echo other board members, I want to welcome the parents coming. I'm a firm believer in the open meeting act and your presence only makes us stronger. So I'm glad you're here and I'll look forward to seeing you and others and thanks. Her link with her leadership with it. I want to thank Ms. Johnson for her years of service. And the perspective and attitude she brings to it because it takes every single one of us to move those children forward and I know you've been significant in their lives and I want to welcome Mr. Oberst. Meeting adjourned.